You'll come on in and have a seat. Take up the background if you want. There you go. Sitting where you want. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 23rd, 2022 meeting of the Burlington Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Richard Parker. I'm the Chairman of Planning and Zoning. Due to the coronavirus, this hybrid meeting will be held in person and on the Zoom platform, and it is being recorded. If anyone has any technical difficulties, contact Conrad Ometo at 336-214-4515. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak to any matter that comes before this board, please use the raise hand feature, or if by phone, press star nine. The host will recognize you if you want to speak. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The same time limit applies if you are speaking in person. You must give your name and address when you are recognized to speak. This commission is appointed by elected officials and has five regular members, two extra territorial members, and three alternates. Five members constitute a quorum. If five members are present, our alternate members are welcome to stay and listen. However, the alternates are not required to stay for the meeting. Now, this is a public meeting, and if you have come to speak tonight, you will be given a chance. It's now time for our roll call. Can everyone on the commission hear me okay? I hope so. When you hear your name, please respond in the affirmative and raise your hands. John Black.
Here.
Ryan Kirk.
Here.
James Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Lee Run.
Here.
I saw this here. Bill, Joan, Amber, Patricia, and Ethan. Two of them are on Zoom, I think. Joan, are you here?
We're not hearing her.
We're not hearing? Okay. Ethan, can you hear us? If they can't hear us, it's not doing much good, are they?
Joan is on the other.
Hold on one sec. Let's see if we can get these two Zoomers online.
Test you guys. Can you hear us? Test, test.
Joan, are you there? Ethan?
Testing. Joan, can you guys maybe keep on just chatting a little bit for us?
Yes.
They're here. Their presence, our meeting is around.
Well, can they hear us?
Yes. You guys can hear us, correct? Can you use your raise hand feature?
They looked a bit up on chat and see if they...
Okay.
Okay, they can hear us.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Okay, there's Joan. She can hear us. All right, so we have Joan and Ethan on Zoom. The staff present, I'll call Jamie Lawson.
Present.
Conrad Ometo.
Present.
Commissioners and guests, during the presentation, please mute your microphones and raise your hand if you wish to speak. Our first item of business is the approval of the minutes for April 25th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So, babe.
Sir.
Motion approved. Set in. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks. I'd like to know who wrote the minutes.
The woman behind you, Michelle Morgan.
You did a wonderful job. It was 12 pages of excellent minutes. You're our secretary forever. You did a great job.
Forever until I find out.
All right. Everybody knows all things you did a good job. Great job. Thank you a lot, everyone. It was a lot of work. Our first item of rezoning business is rezoning 22-0005. Hold on. Let me read from the agenda. "A request to rezone properties zone General Business GB and medium density residential, MVR, to be rezoned to general business limited use for GB-LU. Property is located on the westerly side of Alaman's Road, north of the intersection of Alaman's Road and Bonnie Lane, and on the north side of Bonnie Lane, west of the intersection of Alaman's Road and Bonnie Lane, addressed as 2771 and 2779 Alaman's Road and 2229 Bonnie Lane, and consisting of Alaman's County Tax identification number 120489, 120486, and 171551." Mr. Brown, please come and make your requests.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. It's nice to be here before we are tonight. First time I've been in the council in the year, so...
Yeah.
Good use of this whole building. It's my pleasure not to be representing CCM Equipment. The city, the principal is Mr. Chad Miller, a long-time resident of the city of Burlington. Happened to be in Burlington maybe some years ago. Has a successful business, Carolina Foundation Solutions and Carolina Basin Solutions. For the record, my name is Lawson Brown. I practice law with Vernon Law Firm. And I have known so for 47 years. We have an office at 502 South Lexington Avenue here in Burlington. This is a very straightforward request. What precipitated this request was the lot that is actually owned by Ms. Brenda Brooks that has an address on Bonnie Lane. But after several meetings with staff, it was determined that the best way to approach this is your new method. And I applaud the staff for coming up with the general business limited use. And the limited use that Mr. Miller and his company want to make is one for office use, similar to what offices that he has here now. And parking and storage for company utility trucks and trailers of the type that are exhibited in the package that was submitted to you. It's in the staff report in the agenda package. Not heavy trucks. Stores and materials used in the course of applicant's business. Pelican piles, PVC piping, plastic sheet rolls, other materials relevant to management business and structural foundation repair. The proposed uses do conform with the existing surrounding land uses. The tables provided in the staff report and agenda package tell the story the best. And I don't know if y'all had an opportunity to review those. The consistency of the proposed uses for the property are spot on regarding current and surrounding uses to light industrial. It included industrial warehouse, fast food, a fuel station to the door, and cell storage, communications facility, fast food to eat. The south and west curb would consist of residential properties, but a future plan for the regional commercial uses, which is in Bonnie Lane's plan, and would be consistent with the proposed uses we propose here. Proposed uses, one, are consistent with a future land plan for the subject property and surrounding properties, which is a very compelling reason. I could go even more detailed about that, but it was very well stated in your agenda package. We have communicated with the neighboring property those substantive options. In fact, Ms. Brooks' family, other family members, I mean, some of the adjoining property, and they are on board with this request. There will be no access on Bonnie Lane, all of the entrances will be off Alaman's Road as we presently plan to do this. This is a limited use, the uses that I've stated, there's not a condition of zoning. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have if I can't answer. Mr. Miller is here. He can answer those questions. But the conclusion is consistent with your long-range plan. It conforms secondarily to the surrounding area. The plans that plan transition into regional commercial use. The limited use proposed will in fact be the highest and best use of the property according to the plans of the applicant, property owner, and the city. The applicant's growth and continued growth and desire to remain in Burlington's business. The use, finally, use of REIFL and in the public interest in life of current and proposed uses of the subject property, and its appropriateness and proximity to other current and future business and industrial uses in the area, and its consistency with the city's comprehensive land use plan. That concludes my presentation. I would like to refer right to the bubble. I have to answer any questions, and again, Mr. Miller is here to answer questions if I may do so.
So, Mr. Brown, would you clarify just out loud what the three principal uses will are you proposing here?
Yes, sir. Number one is an office use.
Okay.
Just as you see it on the parcel that ends in 49, parcel 206, office use that he currently has. Second, parking and storage for company utility trucks and trailers of the type that he has now, not bringing in transfer trailer trucks.
The big ones.
They might bring in the big trucks. We're simply using the tight trucks that we showed on the application that's a part of your agenda package. And third, and final, storage of materials used in the course of applicant's business as he has always done on the property that he owns now.
So, the storage of outside storage, is that going to be covered or just in the open?
In the open.
In the open, actually. Okay.
Similar to what it is now. We went back and forth with whether with staff, whether we go with the warehouse pipe or some other type of zone, but this absolutely was the best. Ms. Lawson and her main staff really helped us out right there on directing this request of what you have tonight.
Everybody seemed like the limited use. It's just popping up more and more in every meeting.
No, I went to the city council last week with the one that y'all have approved for the plan on the White Street Drive. As I told the council, and I will tell y'all the rights, you were here at the diocentro for you, no citizen opposition, consistent with the long-range plan, and with staff support, and we have that tonight, again, so.
And commission support.
I hope so.
In most cases.
I hope so.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Have a seat for a minute. And let's see if we have any, any comments. I didn't mean to ask earlier, does anybody have any conflict with tonight's agenda question? Do I have, do you have any conflict, Joan? No? Okay. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, yes. How many vehicles are we talking? Either one can answer. Since you're going to be, you're not going to be accessing Bonnie Lane. You're going to be coming directly off Alaman's Road. So, how many vehicles are you talking coming in and out of Alaman's?
I think we've got 25 vehicles on the property. Might be 12, but depending on time. Boys coming in and trucks going out.
Hours of operation?
Typically seven to five.
Ninety-three Friday?
Yes, sir.
I guess I'll ask, Ms. Brooks, the owner, connected with the business?
Yes, sir.
Would this be a sale or a...
This is a sale. She is a...
It'd be sailing to CCM.
She owns the parcel in questions that we're adding.
Okay.
Her daughter owns the parcel adjacent to us on Alaman's Road.
Okay.
She owns the property adjacent to the piece on the backside of Bonnie Lane.
And that effectively covers all the adjoining residences?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
There is, excuse me, there is one airplane that's contiguous that backs up to it. This is a warehouse manufacturer, still.
Okay. You come here.
Anything? Very simple, mate. Mr. Rowan, anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Were there any calls concerning this rezoning request?
I received, I think we received one call, just with some general questions, but nothing written.
Okay. So, no, John, opposition. Okay. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak to this matter? Right? So, what is your recommendation?
Staff is recommending approval with consistency, item number one, shown in gold and red in their staff report.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I make a motion to recommend approval of the request for rezone properties zone general business and medium density residential to be rezoned to general business limited use. Properties are located on the westerly side of Alaman's Road, north from the intersection of Alaman's Road and Bonnie Lane, and on the north side of Bonnie Lane, west from the intersection of Alaman's Road and Bonnie Lane, addressed as 2771 and 2779 Alaman's Road and 2229 Bonnie Lane, and consisting of Alaman's County Tax Identification Numbers 120489, 120486, and 171551. My motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with a comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in section four, land use comprehensive plan, calls for this area to have regional commercial uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential and commercial uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential and commercial uses in the area. And the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Is there a second?
Sir.
See, I'd like for you to do the roll call, Conrad.
Oh, listen, the roll call is Chair Parker?
Approved.
Vice Chair Black?
Approved.
Member Kirk?
Approved.
Member James Kirkpatrick?
Approved.
Member Rowan?
Approved.
Motion carries in the folks online. Member Jones Ed Nelson, if he can use a raise hand, that's an approval. Okay. And Commissioner, Member Raynor? I think, okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, man.
All right. Motion is approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Outstanding presentation.
Do you understand that this goes on the city council now?
Correct.
Not your first rodeo, is it?
I've been around this block a few times. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
All right. Move on to our next item. Item number four, rezoning 22-0006. "A request to rezone properties zones light industrial LI, general business GB, and high-density residential HDR to be rezoned to light industrial limited use. The properties are located northwest corner of the intersection of Williams Street and East Webb Avenue, addressed at 1535 East Webb Avenue and Zero Williams Street, and consisting of Alaman's County Tax Identification Number 134158 and 133832."
Mr. Chairman, party clarification should be Williamson?
Well, that's what I wondered.
It is Williamson.
It is Williamson. That's a mispronounced. Williamson. Thank you, Mr. Rowan. Please make note of that, staff, so we don't rezone something on the wrong street. So, don't want to be rezoned somebody's house or something, yes? All right. Who is our presenter for this item? Mr. Huffine? Are you ready?
Yes, sir, Chair.
Okay. Let us know what's going on here. What do you want to do?
Chairman Black, thank you for seeing us tonight. My name is Chad Houghfin.
Mr. Parker.
Mr. Parker. Vice Chair Black.
All right. Don't get us confused.
I'm a civil engineer for BioClean. We're working primarily to expand this operation. My name is Chad Houghfin. I'm the civil engineer, 505 East Davis Street, Burlington. BioClean is a foundational repair, disaster recovery service. They are following similarly to Mr. Miller's request in expanding their business in a time of growth, and they're wanting to make use of some of the property that they own, which is currently is owned in general business and high-density residential. Their operations occupy a light industrial parcel used into the east. And there's any request viewed tonight is to take the general business zoning, which is about a 30-foot strip of unused former easement, access to the northern properties, and the high-density residential property to the west, southwest. And through cooperation with staff and some of the work with the owners, we have presented to you a limited light industrial use, paring down some of the intended uses in the light industrial district to fit more of the neighborhood residential business, which is consistent with the long-range planning of this area. So, the request is for the light industrial limited use for the parcels you have on your staff report. And we'd be glad to answer any specific questions you have on the uses or the operations part of that. It's a very similar case to the one we just presented to you.
Well, the difference to me, the last one had three limited uses, and this one is up to 15 or 16, depending on how you read these lists. And it's quite a variety of different uses. Plumbing fabrication to office professional, parking lots, retail use. I don't understand why there's so many uses requested here when we're trying to limit the use. But this just goes the whole gambit from professional office to guys out there in an outdoor storage lot to parking lots. You know?
That's correct.
It just seems like you're not limiting the uses at all.
So, we took the limited use approach to this because light industrial use has about doubled those. This particular operation has offices inside of the business. It has outdoor storage for trailers. It has large bulky items such as pipe, rock, washroom. It has a combination of tenants. There are some open office spaces in that area for leasing. So, there's a significant amount of items specific to this particular property that each one of those limited uses fits in some way to property owner's operation. So, we have gone through, I'd say, two or three iterations, Conrad might be able to help clarify that, on reducing the number of uses and getting more specific to what you would actually hear tonight. So, if you see some of those items such as co-working, there are two businesses in the same office, the unified development ordinance is clear on that when there are two operations in the same building. When you have a large bulky item or an outside storage item, the unified development ordinance specifically addresses those. So, we wanted to be very specific and very clear in what those options and items are, not such a broad uses of three items presented prior to. So, we're very specific on those, and we can give you examples of each one.
Well, my question to staff is, why not just leave it light industrial and exclude the things that aren't going to be there? You know, I mean, it seems like you could do it either way. You could exclude the things you don't want instead of including all the things you did. If all these are under light industrial...
Essentially, what you're looking at are the list of the items that they would like to have, and that assumes that everything else that falls under the gamut of LI is not allowed here. So, you have a much longer list of what's being excluded versus what they're proposing here.
Okay. Well, I just never thought limited use would end up with 16 things. Because everything here before has been one or two items, limited use to those couple items, but this one just seems odd to me.
Yeah, and then in our conversations with applicant, we had discussion about, you know, some of these items might be considered an accessory to the use that's being proposed, but in the applicant's defense, they wanted to be very specific so that there wasn't any question about if there was a use that they were proposing that it would not be allowed. That's why, that's why they have this longer list.
Anybody else have that concern or thought?
No.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners regarding this rezoning?
Top one?
Yeah, I've got a couple. So, the current business activities are all on the property right at the corner of 171 Webb. I guess my questions are, what are the planned use for the one that's currently high-density residential? The one written comment we have is about noise, so I guess ask about potential noise use. And when I look at the property, there is a vegetation buffer between the housing behind it. So, how would you address the potential impacts on neighbors behind?
Excellent. One of the things that we're not able to present to you is a conditional zoning in the city of Burlington, but we have sent staff in the initial preliminary meetings a concept of what we would do, and that involves preserving almost a 40-foot buffer. The existing vegetation is buried in there, topography is steep there, and that's going to remain.
Okay, so, that hill in the back stays and stay that way?
If I may approach you.
Sure. Sure.
This would give you a little clarification for you two to share. If the field is what we're not able to make use of, this is like a hidden vegetation that buffers the residential home and existing facility, that will remain.
Okay.
This is the area specifically.
Okay, so, plenty of woods, still there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, roughly half the width of the lot?
Yeah, it looks like it's driven. I know it well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Black. I'd like to ask currently, the building that's there now, is there electrical or plumbing fabrication and/or metal fabrication going on there now?
Yes, sir.
So, it's already there?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
I was more concerned about noise than vegetation. And so, if they've already got that, and I think one of the letter we got, they were concerned about a noise problem. But if you're already fabricating there, then you're not bringing in fabrication. You've already got it there.
That's correct.
Correct.
And I will say this, in defense of your planning staff... And I will say this, in defense of your planning staff, in my mind, the fabrication is bending of metal to form gutters. That's about all the fabrication there is. But in the spirit of transparency and the reform ordinance, I felt it was important that you all know there's some bending of metal there and some fabrication.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. Rowan? Anything?
Repeat the question before, the standard hours of operations?
I'd say seven to five, sometimes later because the office personnel will be leading the actual work.
Yeah, okay.
They're usually gone in the mornings by eight-thirty out to whatever project they're working on. And the office folks or estimators are coming and going throughout the day in the little service vehicles and pickup trucks. And then the crews come in later in the evening or whenever they complete a job and unload their trailers or store their materials and then go to the next one.
I do have a question, Mr. Parker.
Yes, sir.
The business incubator maker space, those are operations that could be twenty-four-seven available built of a space where someone could come in to use the maker space?
I would have to agree with that. I'm a small business owner and I work all hours in the night. So it could be, but my work is primarily indoors, just like there's a bay door in that building.
Business incubator ties into that because you can create in a small business in a maker space and then jump it out to a different location.
Now maybe something.
Would the owners of the operation limit that maker space to regular business hours?
We could look at it two ways. If that's a point of discussion for tonight, we could look at removing the maker space or we could look at restricting those hours into limited use. I have no way of knowing what the future would be for that use. But we would probably be able to, more fairly to the applicant, limit the hours as opposed to the use. And there in the semantics of maker space, we're all creative and we're simply following what the Unified Development Ordinance tells us.
Well, a maker may want to bend up some big metal instead of some of the gutters. And, you know, it might come in there with a little business and have big old metal rods.
I could take several wood tools that make a lot more noise than metal.
Yeah.
That's true. A wooden won't be running a planer in the middle of the night. I totally appreciate that.
Eleven o'clock.
So what is your proposal or question, Mr. Rowan? Limit the hours of a maker space?
If the owner is amenable to limiting the hours of the maker space, I would see rather having a maker space.
Unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, because this is just a limited use rezoning and it's tied to specific uses, we can't impose conditions on hours of operation. That's not part of this request. So the suggestion would be then either to remove that, which you could do at this meeting, or just keep it as is. But we couldn't put any other further restrictions, unfortunately. There are some limitations in terms of the business incubator type of use, but I'm looking at the specific standards and it doesn't address the hours of operation.
I think it'd be transparent with Mr. Kirk's question. I think it'd be normal business hours. I don't see any reason to expect it would be crazy schedule like somebody was saying. I just think it would be a very common use, similar to what's being done there.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission?
Does it compare something to a question for staff that's currently high-density residential, but it's a narrow lot? Like, how dense of housing could actually go on this lot to meet setbacks, which could potentially be noiseier than a forty-foot vegetation buffer?
Yeah, so the high-density residential allows for a maximum density of up to thirty units per acre if you're talking about multifamily.
Yeah.
So that's pretty dense.
Yeah.
As well as.
What's the acreage of this one?
It's just less than two acres.
Yeah, we're in cubic foot here.
And then with respect to kind of the setbacks for that, it would be thirty feet from the rear yard setback area, which is similar to what they're proposing now. The distance would be. So, you know, that's fairly dense development.
Mr. Kirk, I will say this, when we were canvassing the neighborhood and speaking to door-to-door with the neighbors that would come to the door, the property owner immediately crawls from the project and immediately crawls from the HDR zoning, was very thankful that it would not be multifamily.
Good. Thank you. Were there any calls concerning this rezoning besides the one letter you received?
Yeah, Chair Parker, staff did receive some phone calls just generally asking what was going to be occurring on the site. Staff just provided them the information. And we did receive the one public comment to which the citizen provided a written comment to us last, gave that to us on Friday. So that was given to you this app, this morning. And no further comments were received.
Okay. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this matter?
Yeah, I would like to know why.
Please come up to the podium, state your name and address, please. Come on, don't be shy.
That's okay.
We'll be nice. Somebody hold their withers. Okay, now state your name.
My name is Blanca Hernandez and I live on sixteen twenty-one Erwin, S-E-R-W-I-N Avenue in Burlington. And we did receive this letter saying that our property is in the area that they plan to rezon. And, you know, I would like to know what's going on, you know, why we receive this letter?
We send notices to everybody who lives within, is it three hundred? Three hundred feet of the rezoning. So you're not being rezoned. We just sent you a notice so you would know about it.
Oh.
But you're fine, nothing's going to happen to you. But we have to send a notice to all the people in the neighborhood so everybody knows what's going on.
Oh.
So you're fine, we're not doing anything to your problem.
Oh, good.
Yeah, you're fine.
I'm sorry, that's one thing.
Oh, no, it's okay.
Don't worry.
Of course, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're fine.
I'll be too.
Urban streets, no problem. Okay, that's good. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this matter? Anyone else?
Oh, and heavy any snow, still be able to sled down Williamson? I think so.
All right.
Is that something you spend a lot of time doing, maybe?
I did. I grew up on Warner Street, so it's only, I knew this area like the back of my hand.
What is staff's recommendation concerning this matter?
So staff is recommending approval with consistency statement key, option one, shown in bold and red, as consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Before I call for a motion, are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I made a motion to have approval to request to rezon properties of light industrial, LI, general business GB, and high-density residential HDR to be rezoned to light industrial limited use, LI, LU. The property is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Williamson Street and East Webb Avenue, addressed as fifteen thirty-five East Webb Avenue and Zero Williamson Street and consisting of Alamo County tax identification numbers 134158 and 133832. My motion is based upon the consistency to oppose the rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in section four, land use of the comprehensive plan, calls from this area to have neighborhood commercial uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent residential and commercial uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that. The comprehensive plan calls for commercial uses in the area. The request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses in the area.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll do a real poll for Ethan and John. Can you please just use the raise hand feature when you're called upon? Thank you. Chair Parker.
Approved.
Vice Chair Black.
Approved.
Member or Commissioner Kirk.
Approved.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Approved.
Commissioner Rowan.
Approved.
Commissioner Zech Nelson.
Hand is raised.
Approved. Commissioner Raynor.
Also approved.
Motion carries. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Parker, can you do a quick check on the audio? I'll quit. It's easier to do something, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, gentlemen, if we're going to try to get, if you can unmute and just respond if you can.
Oh, we got it.
Oh, check it out.
I'm just going to say one this week.
Okay. But she knows what's fitting on her. Straight to your mouth. Am I right? Let's go, come on. Sorry, I didn't.
Okay, so the business I said.
Well, that will be Mr. Huffey.
Mr. Meadows, yeah, give the chat. Thank you, Chad.
The stack we have left is thicker than the stack that we're.
I know.
Do you have a report on this, or?
Just the positive information.
Okay, well, we'll call it.
I have to go ahead and do that right now.
Well, we'll wait until we get the rest of our people on line.
Well, the report is.
Well, we're going.
I have a question for this one. Yeah, a question for this, why I'm exploring the neighborhood where we live, on Edgewood Avenue, Long Island. And we noticed that quite a few Airbnb popping up in this store.
Yeah.
I don't think it's on the listed, I don't think.
There's not really a by zoning.
It's not regulated.
It's too new on zoning.
So you don't have any provisions to address?
But it's really interesting that they're being bought up by investment organizations.
I know they are, actually, is that?
Yeah, it's happening.
It's happening here?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. So they're going to be full-time Airbnb. We are in research at the present. I didn't know if we were, have they gone enough?
The Baggett House, which is the big white house. It's kind of blue and all.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's going to be.
Interesting.
The brick house, that's the first house, no, the second house on the corner, southern corner of East Burlington. Obviously, that was in the major protection, striking dark blue. That's going to be.
And that one too, wow.
That's not in the district though.
No, yeah, that one's already outside.
And the red brick building, that's the one, the office building we used to have the red across.
Yeah, yeah.
That has been pushed by a rental company.
But that, we, that came through us.
It did.
That's for. That was for apartments.
And one that will be at rent.
Oh, we didn't know. So not as long-term tenants. We didn't know that, we, but sounds interesting.
Yeah.
So under this current ordinance, how would Airbnb be regulated as?
Just give them a dollar.
I don't think.
Wouldn't there be like an approximate use that you could?
Can you technically call the hotel or?
Or boarding house?
The closest that we have are regulations dealing with benefits. So we have, so we do have.
But if they're not sort of reckless, they only had to have a commercial kitchen.
It's not exactly this.
Did y'all figure?
They're equal to the.
It's an issue with the speaker's management speakers. It's not recognizing the speakers here, so you don't have access to hear them. The only way I can think to bypass it without spending a lot of time on it is to get headphones.
You might as well just continue.
Just keep going. Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Since Mr. Meadows is not here yet, we'll skip his whole presentation. No, he's coming, he's supposed to be here late.
In person?
Or in person, yeah. So before we do that, we're going to finish our agenda. And I have a couple of recommendations that I'd like to present. And then we'll, hopefully, Mr. Meadows will be here in just a little bit. So our first item on this agenda was the historic overlay design standards update. Do you want to go ahead, Mr. Kirk, and give us, since you're our representative, you and Mr. Kirkpatrick, tell us what's going on with this overlay?
Sure, so to me, it's been a successful process of participatory public planning. It's a sizable committee with members from the West Burlington Historic District and the Glenco Historic Districts, including both of the people that originated of part of this that are applied to remove from the overlay.
So they're on the commission?
So they're on the commission.
Okay.
And also has been running this with the consultants and every idea has been fully acknowledged and there's a process worked through and so voices are being heard, so I think it's success. The timeline, I guess, maybe you could help us on the timeline from here?
Sure, so we have had two advisory committee meetings and that comprised of the folks that Ryan has discussed. There's also been stakeholder committee meetings and by that meaning specifically Preservation Burlington folks as well as meetings specifically with architects and builders. We've had two public meetings up until this point. So we are still, a draft of the current document was sent to the state. We're waiting on their comments to receive feedback on. Hopefully, that will be this week, early this week. And then what will happen next is a third advisory committee follow-up Historic Preservation Commission meeting early in June. And the hope is to have a recommendation from the HPC early in June and then the item would be placed on your agenda at your June, on your June agenda day for your consideration. And at that time, we would have the consultants present to make a short presentation on the item. And as you're aware, this is, this would require a recommendation ultimately to city council and then the item would be scheduled for a work session with the city council in July with a anticipated public hearing in August.
So you're saying in thirty days, we're going to get something in June?
Quite possibly, yeah. That's the goal.
It's been moving fast.
Wow, that is moving fast.
Yeah, we've had really great feedback, a lot of great input on the process and the project and a lot of, you know, the purpose of the update is to help modernize our standards, to help streamline the standards, make it more, make them more user-friendly, more property owner-friendly, and to look at use of. user friendly, more property owner friendly and to, and to look at use of, you know, modern materials as alternatives as well. So, so those are kind of the, some of the main goals associated.
Okay.
And much clearer to interpret and use.
Okay.
That was swayed by Robinsons and my neighbor Alan Junior.
Okay.
I don't know. Just to confirm, their application for removal stays at city council. We don't address that.
That's right.
So this is a separate.
Right.
We all know that our June 27th meeting will be 100% Zoom because of the reconstruction of these rooms upstairs and down. Y'all know what they're going to be doing? Have they told you?
It's going to be upgrades and improvements to the audio capacity of this room and upstairs so that it's an improvement to allow for the hybrid meetings to occur.
What about video?
I'm not sure exactly what changes would be expected to that, but I definitely know audio is part of it.
Okay. Well, tell them I want to get on the screen. I've been cut off.
I'll, I'll swap seats with you next time.
Yeah. I'm going to be playing devil.
All right.
We can adjust where you're seated next time.
Okay. I've, I've got a couple suggestions that I'd like to recommend. And the first one is that written comments or criticisms must be submitted from the community by noon on the day of the meeting. Remember several meetings ago, we had a, a 50-page document presented to us at five o'clock before the meeting, which I'm going to put a stop to that if I can. I want to make a recommendation that we, we either have a noon deadline on the day of the meeting or a 24-hour deadline for, for written comments, whichever you think would be best or if at all. I, I just think we need to cut off the comments at some point. What do you think?
See, there's a problem. The, the, the thing is, though, is if you put a timeline on it or a time limit on it, the whole point is to be heard.
Right.
And that's.
I don't, I don't know that that's true. I don't think that a public forum is exactly, the public forum is the city council. Actually, we don't have to listen to the public at all if I understand the UDO.
That I did not know.
I think I'm wrong.
You ever come down there?
Well, I know that we provide the public notification above and beyond what the UDO or the state statute requires and that this.
You don't have a copy.
It is, it is.
And this body is advisory as opposed to the city council, which would make the ultimate call. I, I can tell you that we did have this item reviewed by the city attorney and what his suggestion was, if there was to be a limitation that was put on the public comments and feedback to be, to be consistent with what was being done during the emergency protocols for COVID and to limit it at 24 hours as opposed to noon. And that would be consistent with what the city council does. And so that would be consistent across the board. The insertion of that, we would just make sure that when we send out our letters to property owners, that that was clearly stated in the letter and also would be put on the website too as well so folks would know. You still have the opportunity to participate in the meeting if you want to, either by in person or on Zoom. We're not.
Right. But I think my, my point is that if people are here and a member of the commission wants to ask a question of them, that can be done, but we are not, according to UDO, we don't have to open up the meeting for public comments. That, the city council meeting is a public meeting.
Right.
And so anybody that speaks to us other than a presenter, you know, it's up to us to ask the question. Now, I don't have my manual with me and I would have assumed that Julie or somebody would have known where I'm coming from, but I'm pretty sure that if I had a copy of the UDO, I could probably find where it says that any comments from the public are only there from us asking. So that's what I was saying, James, when you said that. Is that we're not, this is not considered a public meeting. City council meeting is a public meeting now. We are advisory commission and if we want to ask the public a question to clarify something, that's, that's our prerogative. But whether or not we grant them the floor, that's a whole different ballgame. If I'm not mistaken, I would appreciate if somebody would get a copy at some time, maybe by next meeting and verify it. If I knew this was going to come up, I would have brought my copy of the manual. But I, you know, there's been times when I've kind of wanted to say, we really don't need to listen to you. But, yeah.
Well.
Yeah, and I can tell you, I'm looking at the UDO now and we will get a concrete response for you, but these meetings are open to the public, so anyone.
Oh, no, I'm saying they're open to the public, but whether or not the public has a right to, to address the commission, only if the commission asks for clarification. The, the public has a right to address city council because that's a public meeting.
Yeah.
I think if I read it correctly, year, you know, a couple of years ago, I'm.
Give us a minute or two and we might be able to find the answer to your question. I wasn't prepared to.
Well, I was.
What's that?
Obligating to listen to public, to leave this council obligating.
I guess I'd like to add that I understand the intention, but getting public engagement is challenging enough. I don't want to add more barriers to keep people's voices from being heard. And I mean, recommend you get this in to, to make sure it's included by the day before. But I'm still happy if I have 10 minutes to read the email.
Oh, Mr. Kirk, all I'm saying, I'm just saying what, what I understand is that the public is open.
Yeah.
And if you want to ask someone to come up and say, hey, what do you think? But if I read it right, they just don't automatically step up to the platform and say, I want to say something. If we say, well, we told them to hear it.
Yeah. I guess I was referring more to, do we put a deadline for comments?
Well, I, I was just suggesting we do that.
Yeah.
If you don't want to do it, that's fine. It's just a recommendation from me.
I mean, it's, it's a bit of a burden scrambling, especially in historic district. Pull all that together. That was a big effort, wasn't it?
Yes. In response to that, I understand what the chairman's saying too is that, you know, if you come in here at, at five o'clock for a seven o'clock meeting, all of a sudden you've got 50 things that you've got to get, you don't have time to go through them and address them. So I can, I can understand, you know, we're not trying to limit their talk, but just get it to us in a timely manner so that we can address it properly. I understand what the chairman's coming up with.
Okay, well, we don't have to vote on it. And they're going to check on it.
Their staff?
I mean, I guess. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it next time. My second point is, here's another one. Zoomers and those present must raise their hand before the chairperson calls for concluding commissioner questions. You know, when I say, are there any other questions, that's it for comments from the public. I would like to just say that we asked our final questions and I don't want somebody popping up and just keep, you know, we've had this before where they're keep popping up and asking the applicant more questions and more questions. I'd say when we do our final questions, that's the final questions. So that's my second recommendation. Moll that over, we'll put that in a minute.
And Mr. Chairman, there again, going back to what I was saying, that in a public meeting, you would open the public comments and then you would make a motion to close.
Close the public comments.
Yeah. Once again, I don't think this is meeting, so.
Yeah.
And if you don't acknowledge them, then you don't have to have that problem.
Okay.
But that's.
We'll find out if you did.
But, or did you have, you had two. Did you have a third?
Yeah. Okay. Okay. And this came from one of the commissioners, that the public should address the commission and not the applicant. So a lot of times we have people, the public who want to just bear down and question, question, question the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, my, my memory of Robert Childers and Morgan, they should all go through you anyway.
Well, that's, that's, that's.
All comments should go through, you know, that's why I tried to address you first, even if I'm going somewhere else.
Okay. So these are just three things to mull over and not vote on tonight. It's just things I've been thinking about and if we want to vote on them next time, we could put them in the agenda as a little one, two, three. If you want to vote on them or not, we'll just, we don't have to. I'm just trying to think of ways to.
I recommend one more for consideration. So one, at the end, you ask if there's any additional questions from the commission?
Yeah.
I'd like to ask if there's questions or comments from the commission. Some of these, I'm thinking about the vote on the removal of the historic district. I, I, I'm very curious on some of the rationale for different votes or what you're thinking and I value your opinions greatly and I'd like more opportunities to hear them in this process.
Sometimes the council does that. They.
Yeah.
Explain why they feel a certain way.
Yeah, or if, if you, if you want.
Yes.
Location, of course.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman, since we're, Mr. Chairman, since we're, you grabbed an egg.
Okay.
Mr. Ron brought up a, a really, well, I mean, we're still waiting, right?
Yeah, we could have gotten.
No, I mean, we're still.
He's all formidable, five minutes.
Oh, he's not here yet. Mr. Ron's comment about Airbnb has really kind of piqued my curiosity because I'm not as familiar with the concept of Airbnb as I probably should be. But my understanding is it's like turning your house into an apartment and renting it out. Am I close? I mean, I'm asking him. So, so we have no control. There, there's nothing to stop, like my next door neighbor turned her house into an Airbnb and all of a sudden I've got strangers spending a week, two weeks, a month beside me that I have no, no clue about. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean, essentially, we don't, the city does not regulate whether or not there are rental housing units versus owner occupied housing units. So at this point.
So the question I have, a, a, I don't know, a gravest convicted criminal who's just gotten out of murder or something, could rent my next door neighbor's house and there's no control over that. I'm, I'm just throwing that out. I'm not saying that it would happen that way, but am I right?
I don't, I mean, I don't know that there's, I, I'm not an attorney, so I can't advise on a legal aspect, but I don't think there's any requirement for them.
My understanding is blank. Your, your, your concept, how you think that section is 100% correct?
Okay, I'm asking you, do not as a lawyer, but as a city planner, have other cities done anything about Airbnbs as far as regulations or not? I'm not asking your legal opinion, I'm asking you from, from a planning, is there something that we need to look at to address this that other communities has done? That's what I'm asking.
Sure, sure. Now, to, to answer your questions more clearly, yes, there are communities that regulate Airbnbs and, and it's something that staff has taken a look at. We haven't developed any standards, but if it's, if it's something that, you know, city council wants us to, to, to look at, we certainly will. It's, it's a difficult thing to regulate and police, so, you know, there, there are obviously pros and cons incorporated into that.
Well, could you at least advise city council that planning zoning has.
Have some questions.
Have questions about it and do they want you to investigate? I don't know. Anyway, so those are suggestions. We, we can, we can talk about them further if necessary.
Almost late.
Well, all I was doing was, I was just biding time and waiting.
I was going for a motion to adjourn.
I got you.
Say.
Say.
Oh, man.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I'm going to let you.
You got the.
I have one. You might be able to find it further than I can.
I have it right here. While he's doing that, so there are local governments that have regulated Airbnbs and just as Ms. Lawson indicated, it is a, it's a big endeavor to undertake. One of the largest problems associated with those kinds of regulations is the enforcement issue. Because the problems that you're going to experience with the Airbnbs is going to happen on the weekends and in the evenings. And if you're, you're either going to give that responsibility over to your police who already have plenty to do, or you're going to hire enforcement staff who's going, who you're going to pay to work on nights and weekends. And so that's a really pragmatic issue to grapple with is, you know, are we experiencing a diminished quality of life such that we're prepared to spend the money that it's going to take to enforce regulations at two in the morning on a Saturday night? You know, if, if, are we ready to do that? And that's, that, you have to make that decision before you pull the trigger on it.
That's the big decision.
It is. It is the big decision.
Yes. And, and, Mr. Chairman, I would say, and then as one of those decisions you don't make until after some kid has been violated for some, then all of a sudden it's 2020. Oh, well, we should have regulated this.
Okay.
After the.
Item number five, UDOTA 3-22, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Mr. Chad Meadows to present the Unified Development Ordinance text amendments. Mr. Meadows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members. It's great to be back before you. I appreciate y'all's indulgence as I learn how to present this complex material to you quickly, easily, in ways that you can readily understand. So we continue to try to up our game. I see you looking at your wife.
I have time.
I understand, I understand. So we today are going to, there we go. We're going to talk about some outreach efforts very, very quickly. I'm going to give you a summary of UDO 322 and we'll jump into the next steps. This is obviously the Eighth Amendment to the UDO since its adoption way, way back, you may remember, on November 1st of 2019. And so to outreach, one of the things that we realized recently was when the UDO was adopted, we didn't have COVID, we didn't have Zoom, we didn't have housing, housing crisis, we didn't have supply chain problems. Since we started on this project, you know, we've gone through one, two, three planning directors, one, two, three managers, I'm not sure how many is that. The point is that conditions have changed over time and doing all you guys have stuck with us. We've got more than it works, but we're always looking for ways to improve it. And as evidence of that, I can tell you that the city has embarked, starting this year in February, perhaps even a little bit earlier this year, staff had initiated a series of discussions with members of the community, whether they're developer community members, whether they're citizens, whomever. This is how the UDO works. This is why we're here. Help us improve it. Okay, so that was done in February. We conducted a digital presentation, an online, a Zoom webinar. We conducted a digital presentation, an online, a Zoom webinar with folks in April of this year. And then we did it again in May. In fact, in May, we had an in-person meeting. So we, we came together with anybody, everybody that we could get to come, and we asked them questions. Like, how can we improve the U D O? What should we be doing to make y'all's life easier? How can we make this document more effective? Okay, and we've taken that information to heart. I can tell you that members of the staff that you see before you and me have spent hours, and I mean hours, in this very room, at those very tables, trying to come up with improvements to your regulations to address concerns and comments that have come up through the process. All right, and so we're here tonight before you with our latest version of new and improved U D O-ness. Just as a matter of context, remember that generally speaking, there's three things we do text amendments for, right? We support community prosperity, so we did, we take steps to increase flexibility, remove barriers, establish more means of compliance. We increase precision and clarity. We're always looking for a cleaner, easier way to say things. And then finally, we address changing legal requirements, things that have been handed to us from the General Assembly or the federal government. So, my mouse keeps wanting to go over to the zooming area there. So this is our eighth text amendment since adoption. Um, there are fifty-four areas of revision. I plan to take five to ten minutes for each.
You think?
Just kidding.
We've organized these into three blocks. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about a handful of community prosperity changes that we've made to procedures, districts, and uses. There's about eleven of those. There's a handful of community prosperity provisions that we've changed that relate to the development standards. So there's about twenty of those. And then at the back end of the presentation are a series of changes we've made to increase precision and clarity. So, you know, just, just to give you some sort of sense of the organization here, we've, we've parsed these text amendments into those that we believe will be helpful for the development community. Okay, based on conversations that staff has had with applicants, based on conversations that staff has had with this group, based on conversations that have been held with the council. Okay, so we're going to deal with these community prosperity things. Things that maybe don't directly relate to community prosperity, but are nonetheless important, are class under increasing precision and clarity. Okay, everybody, everybody good, everybody clear where we're going? Okay, all right, good, good. So I am going to hit the highlights here. If anybody has any questions, or would like to see any of the detailed text up on the screen, just let me know, we'll pull up that, that slide so that we can talk about it. In the interest of time, I'm going to stay at thirty thousand feet and try to walk you guys through these changes as quickly as possible. So, let's jump in. Community prosperity, procedures, districts, uses, what have we done? Well, we increased the administrative adjustment amount by ten percent. Okay, so that means in downtown, um, you can have an administrative adjustment that's, you know, up to twenty percent. Elsewhere, it's ten percent. Okay, so we increased things across the world by ten percent. That's on page two dash seventeen of your ordinance. You guys may remember, we have these things called planned developments. In a planned development, I can propose changes, deviations to the standards, provide, and I provide a higher quality of development, whatever in the heck that means. That's been an issue, and staff's been trying to work through that. We are now in the process of incorporating more clarity about what exactly we mean when we say higher quality development. So this was our first pouré into it. It deals with landscaping, and on page three dash fifty-seven, we've added some potential ways that an applicant could supplement their plan development application with higher quality landscaping. Okay, so there's, there's provisions in there about, you know, major species, and winter flowering things, and variations in foliage, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All voluntary, just some examples of what we mean when we say higher quality. Our hope is, long term, to, to, to continue to build out that section with more details about how to, how to, how to, how to higher quality comply in terms of parking, design standards, fencing, lighting, et cetera. Okay, bungalow courts, you guys may recall those.
Question? Yeah, we had a case here just last month where we had a developer that came in and wanted to enhance his property and, and get a planned development.
Okay.
And we hadn't approved all this yet. But he came in wanting to, you know, get resignments if he could.
Sure.
And use this provision to help him out, and we denied him anyway.
Oh, yeah, he said no. That's okay, that's your legislative discretion to do so.
We're not legislating, we're advisory.
I understand, but the point is that as far as a legislative decision goes, you do have discretion in terms of whether or not you approve what's proposed.
But how did he come to us with this before we've approved this red line?
Well, I don't know the answer to that.
The guy develops everywhere, I can tell you why. I mean, those guys are everywhere. They are, they're a decent sized organization out of Lubbock, and I, I think they do good work. But he, he's in a lot of different towns, and probably has this verbiage somewhere that he doesn't.
I, I wondered how he used this verbiage, and we hadn't even approved it yet.
I'm making an assumption, that's all.
I'm talking about Zimmer.
Yeah.
They applied for a planning development.
Right. No, but this, we're, we're changing right here to.
We made some suggested changes to landscaping provisions. Our hope is to broaden that and do it with a lot of other things. Whether or not we'll get additional language from this person or the origin of that language, I don't know. We work with staff to come up with what was proposed. I would expect or hope that you guys in the future will see even more detail, not just in landscaping, but in other areas. We really want to broaden this out.
Okay, I, I just wondered how they knew about it before we approved it.
Yeah, that's a question, I'm not sure. I mean, you know, a good standard is a good standard. If, if, if the language is so close that it's uncanny, I think that's something to talk about. Because, you know, I've certainly not had any conversations with.
Okay.
I see plagiarism.
Well, you know, a good idea is a good idea. And so, you know, I mean, we should, we should share good ideas freely. Anywho, um, let's talk about bungalow courts. That, those are the single-family detached developments that share a driveway. They're full-size homes, but they're owned smaller lots because they share a driveway. And there's a handful of other things that we incorporate. This is done to encourage a wider range of housing choices and create opportunities for people to buy in to houses, you know, without spending tons and tons of money. And so what we've done with the bungalow courts is, in the tradition of making these things easier to establish and more widespread, we added them to the MX district as an allowable use. We increased the maximum lot coverage to eighty percent and reduced the district dimensional requirements. Not so much that you could convoy the fire code, but rather you had to comply with the fire code, and we would use our district dimensional requirements that take a backseat. Okay, so again, more flexibility, ways to encourage this kind of stuff. Still a review, still a fire code issue, you still need to be safe, but we're trying to, to, to ease the use of this tool in more parts of the city. Similar kinds of changes with pocket neighborhoods. Remember that that's sort of like a triple charge on the little court. You can have more than five, right? Added into MX, increased the lot area, reduced the front setback, we got rid of the cap on number of homes, and made a handful of other changes, including the ability to do tiny homes. So, again, just greater ability to facilitate this kind of use type. I mentioned tiny homes, we've added those as a use. MDR, HDR, MX, MB. If it's on a chassis, which some are, then we treat it as a recreational vehicle. Added some other uses here and there, issues that we've had problems with, things like contractor yards and GB, the ability to do a research and development use type in the medium industrial district. Made some changes in multifamily, specifically reducing the setbacks from single-family homes or districts for recreation areas, reduce the parking to be more in line with the I T E standards. We've allowed murals to incorporate some wall sign within the mural, sort of in response to what's going on in downtown. You guys are getting some murals, and it's cool, and we want to encourage that. So to the extent that you can accommodate a, a wall sign in the same manner that you've done the mural, we want to permit that. So there's standards on page four sixty about that. Handful of changes to fence and wall heights. Primarily, we're still keeping the four feet anywhere between the front facade and the street that it faces. Also keeping the four feet wherever there's a required street setback, whether that's on the side or the rear. Everywhere else on the lot, you can go up to eight feet. Okay, so that's, uh, that's a, it's a minor increase in height for residential, mostly in response to privacy concerns and questions that we've received up to this point. Next is the portable storage containers. You recall, we've got these in the current code, but we require, we, we apply those standards to residential properties. We've got a lot of non-residential uses in town that use these things. It's becoming a problem and a source of concern. So we're establishing some standards to allow non-residential users to use portable storage containers on a temporary basis in locations to the side or the rear of the building for up to ninety days per calendar year. Okay, so this is an improvement in that today, you're not supposed to have any of these. We're allowing them on a temporary basis.
So if you got one in the, at the end of October, that calendar year got over and it was ninety days, could you keep it there for ninety more days into the next year?
Uh, yes, and, and, as long as you came back in and asked for a new temporary use permit, met the requirements, and that was granted, then yes, it could stay for, what, January, February, March.
So six months total, if it's two years.
Yeah, if you, if you time it correctly.
Okay, thank you.
Those are the big changes in terms of procedures, districts, and uses. Any other questions on that? Rolling on, we're going to switch over to standards now. Okay. So, um, we've added more flexibility when it comes to adding new parking spaces to existing development sites so that you can come in and add those new spaces without having to retrofit the existing parking lot. Okay, the current standards were a little bit vague about how that works, and how do we facilitate additional new parking that meets today's standards? And parking lots or, or in vehicular use areas that don't meet today's standards, how do we deal with that? So we've put in some extra flexibility on page five dash three of that. We've reduced bicycle parking standards and shifted from a, a standard that's based on the number of vehicular spaces to a standard that's based on the number of units or the square footage. And that's more in keeping with what we've seen in other communities across the country. Okay. We removed perimeter landscape buffer requirements within that perimeter landscaping buffer with above unbuiltable land. What is that? Well, that's, you know, flood plain, it's riparian buffer, it's park. It's something else that's never going to be developed that has trees. Okay, and we'll always have trees. And so the thought is, do we need to buffer the trees from the trees? And the answer is no, we think that there's a better way to handle that. So we've created a little bit of flexibility there. We're encouraging people to keep vegetation today, right now. You get one and one quarter times the credit of existing vegetation towards minimum landscaping requirements. We're bumping it up to two, so two times the credit. If I've got a four-inch existing tree, how much credit do I get for a nine-inch tree? Eight inches.
Two times.
Two times.
On the type of.
Great, what is it though?
What type? Vegetation, five dash forty-three. Just vegetations. Vegetation.
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 Thank you, thanks for that.
What, and why do we have blueprint in some?
Blueprint is, is current text that's been removed.
Removed?
Yes. Okay.
Removed on again.
Thank you for that. So let's talk about the commercial building design standards. Spent a lot of time working on those. Staff continues to, it's, it's an example of the eighty-twenty problem, right? Eighty percent of the discussion and issues relate to twenty percent of the code, and this is part of the twenty percent. We have continually struggled with this issue. Some of that frankly has to do with COVID and the nature of retail in twenty twenty-two, which is very different than when it was, or how it operated in twenty twenty, right? What we're seeing is people that don't have indoor seating anymore, people that are using walk-up windows, people that are focusing on use of the car instead of face-to-face interaction inside a store. So things are changing, and we're trying to, trying to catch up and keep up with that. How have we changed this? Well, um, entry features are no longer required to be immediately adjacent to entry doors. Page five dash fifty-seven. We've reduced the depth of projections or recesses on the primary facade. It used to be ten feet, we've dropped it back to five feet. We've reduced in situations where you're providing outdoor seating as one of the ways to meet design standards, we've gone from ten outdoor seats to five. So these are compromised positions. We're making changes to the standards to try to soften them, to try to facilitate community prosperity, but not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Okay? If you can stand that euphemism. Not my favorite, but nonetheless, it's there. Commercial penetration, okay, so this is windows. The size requirements have been reduced across the board. And I know that it says ten percent, and how it's been reduced is it was thirty, now it's twenty. In places where it was twenty, it's now ten. Okay, so we've reduced the, 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 the size of the facade that needs to be transparent by a, not a significant percentage, but a decent percentage. So that's one change on page five dash sixty-three. We've added a new set of alternatives for glazing. So let's say, just for the sake of argument, that my building doesn't have windows, and I don't want to have windows because I'm a, I'm a, I'm a popular coffee place that happens to sell donuts, and I'm now having walk-up and drive-through places, and there are no doors or windows because nobody's supposed to be in the store. What do we do? Well, we're trying to provide some alternatives in terms of you can do mechanical fixtures, you can do false windows, you can do these kinds of recesses that mirror or, or mimic window placement, the ability to do awnings and things. So we're trying to maintain some visual interest on the facade without having to do glass. Okay, because that's really where some of today's retail is headed. We've added additional guidance about building variation standards for multiple building, multifamily development. If you look at the current standards, it says, hey, you got more than one building, you've got to have different size, height, characteristic variation, do it somehow, we don't know how. You go figure it out, applicant. That's been a problem. And so now, we've got a very detailed set of variation options available on five dash seventy-nine based on the number of buildings that you've built.
But where did all this come from? Is this verbiage from another city, or did you make all this up?
I'm happy to say that not only did I make it up, we made it up. Those provisions on page five, it's five dash seventy-nine.
Wow.
Developed, sitting right there with your staff.
Wow, that's pretty impressive.
Well, I give them the credit. I came up with something, and they're like, no, get this out of here, man, we need something that actually works. So we, we put that stuff together ourselves.
That's, I'm, I'm impressed, I have to say.
Well, thank your staff, because they were there.
They were, I'm impressed. Thank you. Why did this?
Let's talk about signage for a second, because as you know, perennially, we always deal with signs. So a handful of changes. Internally illuminated signs that are thirty-two square feet and size are smaller are, we're now suggesting be permitted to face residential districts or residential uses. So you don't have big, huge, ginormous signs that could face homes, but smaller signs can face homes and even be internally illuminated. We're allowing the owner to, so we've got these obsolete sign provisions, right? If you've got a sign in front of the building, when the business owner leaves, the sign is obsolete, it has to come down. Okay, you can either take the full sign down, or you can take the sign face down. And we're leaving it up to the landowner to make that decision. If you don't want to take the sign down, you don't have to take the sign down, you do have to obscure the sign face. How do you do that? You do something that's mechanically affixed to the sign. It has to be rigid, it can't be fabric, it can't be, you know, vinyl or, or flop around or anything like that. It can't bear any message. Okay, so we're giving some options, some, some means of reaching compliance here. The intent here is if there is no business to be advertised, there should not be a sign there. But we're stopping short and making people take the entire sign down, it's cost prohibitive. And frankly, honestly, sometimes those sign provisions are one of the biggest incentives for getting somebody back into that vacant building for a variety of reasons.
So once this comes into, once we, city council approves this, will we see signs start coming down? Will staff or inspections or somebody go around and?
You should already start seeing signs come down now. There was some sort of declaration of emergency or something that I don't fully understand that has to do with the day-to-day operations of. that has to do with the day-to-day operations of code enforcement and sign provisions. So I don't, I don't purport to understand that, but the, this, these obsolete sign provisions have been on the books. This is not new. We should have seen some signs coming down, but for this declaration of emergency. And that's a question for staff about where we are with that and what that means because I don't fully understand it.
We held off, Chair Parker, we held off on the enforcement of obsolete signage for the, in the state of emergency because just businesses were having trouble leasing to these folks. So we stayed that a hundred eighty days expiration of obsolete signs with the enforcement activity during the state of emergency because folks weren't able to have these buildings.
Okay, I think that term is about to end and I think that the intent is to go ahead and move forward. Hopefully this approach gives a little bit more flexibility.
Chair, Chad, what, what prompted changing to allow internal illuminated signs to be facing residential? I mean, if I have a business across the street from me and they don't have an illuminated sign, I'm not sure I'd be excited at the fact that we've
Not seeing that, yeah.
Of seeing a sign illuminated unless there's just been some great outcry that we're not gonna bring our multi-billion dollar business to Berlin because we can't illuminate our sign.
Right, right, it's a good question. So just as background, the current regulations do not permit any internal illuminated signage to face a single-family residential structure or a single-family residential district. That's what the standards say today. We are suggesting softening of that stance to move towards the ability to have a smaller sign, a thirty-two square foot sign, a sign the size of a piece of plywood or smaller, to have internal illumination. Why did we make that suggestion? We're making that suggestion because we've heard from members of the development community that not having the ability to light that smaller sign is affecting their business in a negative way. Now, you can believe that or you can say, hmm, I don't know if that passes muster with me, but that's what we've heard up to this point.
Internally illuminated, that does not allow for LED lighting?
Yeah, neon.
No, it doesn't. So LED lighting is a no-no anyway and we're not making that change. Neon is a no-no and we're not making that change. This internal illumination stuff, think about a sign cabinet that has a plastic base and it's got like tubes of fluorescent tubes inside. Yeah, so that's kind of where we were headed.
That's like my office.
Is it currently prohibited to use LED tube in replacement of that fluorescent tube?
Um, as long as the LED is inside the sign cabinet, it is not prohibited. What, what is prohibited is the, is, is placement of LED outside the edge of the sign. Yeah, that's a no.
But that, that was kind of the question, LED tube, which is pretty bright. Yeah, I, I just, I'm not comfortable with this, but I was curious why this was being included. Once again, if it was across the street from my bedroom, I don't know that I would want it.
So, so if a business, if, if, if there was no residential building across from the business, could they do it?
Sure.
Okay, and then somebody built a residential building across from?
If a sign was there, it's okay to be there, it's okay to stay.
That's what happened to my house.
Yeah.
I got a sign facing my house, uh, but I bought, built a house after the sign was there.
Right.
Okay.
Do you like that sign in front of your house?
Oh yeah, I love it.
You, in that, in that, you came to the nuisance and therefore, that, that's the legal expression I don't find, you know? You came to the nuisance.
Okay, that sounds like me.
On my name, who is the nuisance coming to you?
I think nuisance to Tony. Continue on.
Moving on, so another big change is banners, okay? This has been an issue that your staff has been dealing with for many, many years. There is a desire upon the part of business owners to have banners. What's a banner? Grand opening, now open, now hiring, sale, whatever, okay? That's what folks are, are saying they need. We have made it in the past difficult and impossible to do banners. In order to control this in a managed way, we've revised the banner language to basically allow up to, allow a banner, one banner on site for up to thirty days, once per calendar year, okay? Per lot or per tenant. And you've gotta get a temporary use permit to do it, okay? So we haven't gone back to the wild, wild west, it's not wide open, but we are opening the door to allow people to, to notify the public if they're having a sale or that they're finding open, okay?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay, um, you guys are doing great. Let's talk about EMB signs. Those are the electronic message board signs, okay? So that's becoming all the rage. In fact, one day we'll see, we'll see a world where all signs are electric. I mean, you know, the, the old days of fixed or painted signs are, are leaving us and we're gonna have these electric signs.
What about murals?
I'm sorry?
If we're getting rid of painted signs, then what does that do to murals?
Well, mural's not a sign. Um, corner lots of two or more acres can have up to two EMB signs. Remember, this, an EMB has to be on a ground sign or a wall sign. You can't just have a standalone EMB. It's part of another sign. There's a maximum size limit to what can be EMB on the sign face, okay? And so what we're saying is if you're one of the larger corner lots, you can have two of these and that you can have more than one individual EMB component on your sign face as long as you don't exceed the maximum allowable EMB, which hasn't changed, okay? So we're just clarifying that if somebody wants to do like, say, gas prices and their logo and those happen to both be EMBs, they can do that as long as the total size of the EMB doesn't exceed that, so it's already allowable, okay? Supplemental signs, these are those, um, that they are signs that we're allowing in recognition of the Reed case. They're, they can be ideological signs, they can be signs that indicate, hey, I've got land, you know, land for lease or property for sale or something like that, that's a supplemental sign. And we've heard a lot from non-residential development across the city that our current supplemental sign size of twenty square feet is insufficient, inadequate and that needs to be larger. In response to that, staff is suggesting that we go up from twenty square feet to thirty-two square feet, but at the same time, we limit the total size of any individual tenant's supplemental sign, not to thirty-two square feet, but rather to six, six square feet per tenant, okay? That is the, the modest, middle-of-the-road approach that will allow us to accommodate these developmental signs that say land for lease or land for sale, but at the same time, recognize the ability for individual tenants to have these things, but not too big, okay? Couple more topics on size. Incidental signs, these are the open, beware of dog, my small directory sign from my single building or something like that. These are incidental, in other words, they're, they're not significant in size or message.
Like no soliciting?
Right, exactly, exactly. Each individual sign is, is set at a maximum size of one and a half square feet per individual sign. And to ease administration, we basically give each site a budget of twenty square feet of incidental sign face area. We're suggesting that be raised to thirty-six, okay? As you can see, we've had a lot of trouble with signs. People don't feel like they've got enough signage to compete in today's complex, you know, retail market. And so we're trying to address the sign provisions to allow for that. Last piece on signs, almost done. After a lot of discussion, a lot of debate, the city is suggesting that we do allow ground and wall sign faces to, to include a, a, a sign that is a, is a fabric material, provide that it maintain a, a taut condition. In other words, it's not flapping around or sagging, that it be kept tight to the structure that it's lashed to. So that is that suggestion. We have plenty of other standards about sagging, flapping, torn signs that you gotta fix it. So we're not too worried that we're creating an enforcement problem here. And we're just trying to recognize that some folks have and use these fabric signs. So we're recognizing that. That's it for signs, switch your gears, talking about subdivision. You may recall, we have some subdivision entry point requirements based on the number of units that you've got in your development, right? So if I have more than fifty-one units in my development, I have to have two points of access, okay? Now, big caveat, okay? That's the, the UDO standard. There is also a fire code standard for the minimum number of units or accessways that you have to have to your subdivision. Which one controls? Well, the one that's most restrictive, okay? Who gets to decide? In many cases, that's your fire chief, your fire marshal, okay? If your fire code is more restrictive than what we're suggesting, then you're gonna go with what your fire, fire chief says, okay? So we wanted to create that opportunity for that to happen, but also recognize that our current standard was onerous to people. So what we have done is increased the number of allowable units and/or the development size. Basically, today, if I've got a fifty unit subdivision, a fifty-one unit subdivision, I have to have two entryways. We've increased that to a hundred and one, okay? If I have a five acre parcel, I have to have, or five point one acres, I have to have two entryways. We've raised that to ten acres, okay? So we've essentially doubled the, the, the number of units or doubled the size or reduced the requirement, depending upon how you wanna look at it, by fifty percent, okay? And I just wanted to caveat that, that there's still fire code and that the fire, that your fire officials do have say in this.
Wouldn't all that be hashed out at TRC?
It would, but, but the standards are what the standards are and part of the TRC discussion is what is the standard? Now, if the fire, if the, if your fire folks don't care or they're comfortable, then the UDC would, would control.
Okay.
This is one, we have a number of subdivisions with really narrow roads that are very difficult to navigate.
They're not based on the city, they're not city maintained?
So they're not city maintained? That doesn't apply to private roads?
So, a variety of things could have happened, like, the road was built when the standard was smaller.
Yeah.
Or the road was built as a private road. We didn't have the standards in place that we have today, which say if you're gonna do it, well, you can't do a private road anymore. But back in the day, you
Oh, you can't?
Knew the private roads.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, that would change that.
Yes, we should have did, that was two or three months ago.
Come on, why am I supposed to remember?
Many amendments. Well, this is only the A one, so. Uh, but yeah, that's the change that was made. You know, most communities that do, in, in today's day and age, if somebody does allow a private street, they require it built to the public standard, which nine times out of ten is the DOT minimum requirement. But here in Burlington, we just don't even do private streets.
And I guess this number, I'm just trying to visualize it, it seems like a huge jump doubling, you know? Where did one hundred come from?
Careful discussion with transportation, engineering.
Okay, so they have say in the work impact.
Yeah, yeah, I, I didn't just have a fever dream that I've come up with a number and talking about it.
Okay, trust the experts.
It's a good question. Okay, guys ready to move on? All right, we're doing on time, okay? Sidewalk installation, okay? This is one that's been a perennial problem. How do we retrofit sidewalk requirements into areas that are already developed that we allow develop to develop without putting sidewalks in? What do we do when somebody comes along and wants to go into a vacant building? Do we hit them with a ninety or a hundred thousand dollar sidewalk bill, right? And what happens when we do that? Well, they walk away and the vacant, the building stays vacant. How do we handle that, okay? So what we're trying to do is on page six dash sixteen, we've established a new table that sets down the requirements for when sidewalks have to be installed. And if you're just doing a change in use or you're doing a de minimis expansion to a building, we are not going to trigger the sidewalk requirements, okay? Now, if you happen to be doing an expansion that does exceed that fifty percent threshold, we've incorporated the ability in some cases to pay a payment in lieu instead of providing a sidewalk because it doesn't make sense to include the sidewalk because there's no connections to it right now. At some point in the future, we hope there will be, but we'll just collect the money now and hopefully work on the sidewalk later when there's somewhere to go on foot.
We don't believe the city keeps that money. They spend it somewhere else.
Well, that's definitely something to look into. If you're collecting money for a particular kind of infrastructure, then you should be spending that money on that infrastructure.
Yeah, but ten years later, five years later?
Well, people need to track that. And that's definitely an issue that is
As for Chad, you recall, we discussed that before so that they couldn't take the money here
Right.
And move it three blocks away because we didn't trust them.
That's right.
And they were supposed to keep the record that, that money is earmarked for this area in, when the time comes.
Can you check on that force?
That is in keeping with what the law says, you know? You're supposed to do that.
Oh, we know, we know, but it just.
So we do have a sidewalk plan in the city.
You do, you do. The sidewalk plan is focused on particular projects in particular areas. And when those new developments or redevelopments or retrofits happen to coincide with where the plan is, then you're gonna follow that plan guidance, okay?
So that triggers.
Right, but, but that's not everywhere. And this is sort of those situations where we don't already have some policy guidance.
I've seen new developments come in with the sidewalks right after the property line and they just stop and there's no payment in lieu of, they're just, they go ahead and build them and with no place to go.
I understand, I understand. Well, that's the nature of the beast with these things, I mean, you know.
So it's either or, you can go ahead and put the sidewalk in or have it in lieu.
In some cases, it's either or. Most of the time, the city would prefer the sidewalk go in in terms of new developments, okay? Yeah, now, where we've kind of run into trouble is we've got these existing buildings that nobody ever put any sidewalk in and, you know, here comes Chad, he just wants to open a car wash or, or some kind of small sort of volume business and I've got now a, you know, seventy thousand dollar bill for sidewalk that I can't support, I mean, I, I, that makes the, the whole venture, you know, impossible for me to do and I walk away and the building stays vacant. So we're trying to, trying to address that situation, okay? Okay, we've added some more clarity about open space set aside requirements. Specifically that if you have a single-family residential subdivision of five or fewer lots, you're not required to provide open space set aside. Why? Because you don't have an HOA big enough to manage it. Also, we have adjusted the open space requirements for duplex, triplex, quadplex buildings. If you build six buildings, five or fewer buildings, you do not have to provide open space, okay? If you're multifamily, if you're townhouse, you still have to provide open space, okay? We've recognized walking trails as an active recreation feature. All right, you guys are in homestretch, at least with respect to community prosperity. We are, we've had some issues with which side of the building wall is the primary one. There's a bunch of standards with respect to facade requirements, demonstration, entryways, et cetera, that flow from whether on the primary or secondary building wall. We are trying to be responsive to input from the development community and recognizing that the primary building wall could either be one, the building wall that faces the street, it gives the property its street address, or two, the building wall that contains the primary entrance, okay? Okay, non-conforming site features. This is a ginormous issue that we've been dealing with. How do we retrofit existing sites in town that don't meet the standards? And we, we wanna encourage them to be occupied, encourage them to be used and not be too expensive. The current approach is a scaled system. If you're doing an amendment, an addition, an expansion that's less than twenty-five percent of the replacement value, you don't have to do anything, okay? You don't have to come into compliance with any of the non-conforming site features. We've raised that from twenty-five percent to fifty percent, okay? So I can have a bigger addition without coming into compliance with parking, landscaping, lighting, fencing, screening. If I am doing something that exceeds fifty percent, okay? I need to come into compliance with the standards by a percent. by a percentage commensurate with the level of investment that I'm making. So if I'm investing at 51% of the structural's value, I have to bring the site into 51% of compliance. How's this working? That's great! I think we're still working on it. I think we're still trying to figure it out. I don't think we're there yet. I think that you should expect to see more adjustments to this as we continue to work through it and try to find the sweet spot here. You know, we want to bring sites into compliance, but we don't want to do it in ways that disincentivize their use. And we're still just trying to get them, get it right. This is closer to where we need to be, but in my opinion, we're going to have, we have more to do. Finally, clarification that existing sites can add these new parking spaces. You know, even if you're not doing an addition or expansion, you don't need to address the non-conforming parking space provision. So we're trying to soften our approach to handling additional parking on built sites. That is it for standards. Okay? All right.
Can you finish in 10 minutes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Increasing precision. This is the last bulk set of provisions. We've changed, adjusted the quasi-judicial procedure notice provisions to be consistent with 160D, okay? We've clarified that order of adjustment notice of decision is not provided in 10 days, but rather with the final order after it's signed, usually 30 days. We've clarified that final plats can be used for subdivisions of three or fewer lots as long as there's no infrastructure and that the planning director can require a preliminary plat if an applicant for a final plat is coming in and that land has already been subject to a prior final plat, okay? Because if something's already gone through a final plat, they are gaming the system, so we don't want that. So we're allowing the planning director to make a determination to accede to preliminary plat if they think that's appropriate. Preliminary plat. If staff's looking at your subdivision and says, you don't have enough room for parking, they can require you to file a parking agreement with your preliminary plat application. Okay? Clarification, that city council can approve a less intense rezoning decision without remand. Okay, so if somebody comes in for HDR, can council approve that at an MDR level without going back through to renotice and back to you? The answer is yes, they can. And that's a statutory thing. It's not us making some crazy, crazy talk up. GB, general business. We raised the density to 24. Why did we do that? Because that's how, that matches the lots, like we wrote for the district. So it would be a good idea for those two things to.
24 what?
24 units per acre. Okay. If you have an approved site plan and you want to make a modification to that and that modification involves changes to the number of required parking spaces, you get to visit your friends at TRC. Okay, that's not going to be a solely planning director decision anymore. Site-specific vesting plan, okay? When you have a rezoning, rezoning runs with the land, right? Right. Conditional rezonings and planned developments have master plans, conceptual plans associated with them. Does the master plan or the concept plan run with the land like the zoning does? No, it does not. Those plans are subject to the vesting rules, okay? We've added some uniformity on minimum lot area for duplex, triplex, quadplex and single-family attached, okay? And essentially, what we're trying to do is bring some clarity to the madness in how we're handling minimum lot size for these missing middle kinds of houses, okay? Because it's all over the board, it's crazy. Nobody, including me, understands it. We are now suggesting the following. If you do a duplex, in any district where a duplex is allowed, that duplex must be on a 10,000-square-foot lot. If you do a triplex, 15,000 square feet. If you do a quadruplex, 20,000 square feet, okay? Single-family attached have a threshold amount that corresponds roughly to the same size associated with a single-family home plus an additional 1,600 square feet per unit, okay? Trying to bring some consistency to this. I swear to God, we're going to make this better, or we're going to die trying. Okay, this is a big issue. The next round of changes that we work on is going to be much more clarity about minimum lot size and basic dimensional requirements by use type. Because it's, it's not clear.
What about side setbacks?
Side setbacks. We're allowing zero side setbacks for duplex, triplex, quadplex, single-family attached as long as there's a party wall, okay? You can have a zero lot line on any side that has a party wall associated with it.
But on single-family, it's zero?
Single-family, no.
Okay, still 10 feet, definitely?
Well, whatever the district is.
Okay. 10 feet, okay.
Internal street setbacks for townhouse and multifamily development? Go by. Too confusing, okay? We're going to use the regular street setback standard, which could be 25 feet, could be 20 feet. We're not doing these reduced setbacks for internal streets. Why? Because what is an internal street?
Probably.
All right, we can do those. Okay. We've increased the use separations for adult businesses up to half mile, okay, consistent with the spacing that we're using for some other uses. Okay. Car washes, you can never do them in EMB, although they said in the use of energy could. We fixed the buffer requirement because that was backwards. So if you're going to do a car wash next to residential, you need to have a big buffer, not a little buffer, okay? We've added an image clarifying the fence placement. You guys did UDO 222. You may remember that. It had to do with fences inside easements. Remember that? We put a picture in, page 4-63. A lot of changes to fences. If you're going to do plastic, it's got to be rigid plastic. You can't do sheet plastic. Wire mesh, like chicken wire or something like that, mesh fabric, it's allowed as long as it's 3D tall or less and not in a setback. Planning director can allow barbed wire for utility uses for security purposes, okay? Can I use a semi-trailer for portable storage as part of my residential? You swill, no, you can't. So we're clarifying that. Site distance triangles are measured from the edge of the pavement, not the edge of the right-of-way, okay? So we fixed that. That's actually a statutory change. So we're almost done, back to page. One, single-family residential dwelling on its own lot is exempted from landscaping. Is a residential subdivision of multiple lots exempted from landscaping? No. If I'm building my house on my lot of record, am I exempted from landscaping? Yes. New requirements for concealing building wall attachments fixtures, downs mouths, okay? Make it disappear because you painted it the same colors as a building or enclose it in some sort of enclosure, okay? If it's on the primary building wall. Density rounding. You may remember this one. We were singing the praises about density rounding. We're going to round up. Are we going to round hundreds? No, we're not, okay? So if my density comes out at 1.09, does that mean I get two units? No, it doesn't. You only get one unit. So we'll round to tenths, not to hundreds. We modified eight different definitions. Not going to go over those. We did remove one, something called other retail. It was a holdover from the previous zoning ordinance. It was bad, okay? Non-conforming signage. You can relocate non-conforming signage, but only when that move is triggered by right-of-way acquisition or roadway construction. So we've added that clarity. Finally, last comment. HBC composition, your historic preservation commission, was raised from seven to nine members. And that may change again, but that was, that was where we are with this. And so, questions?
One more on the previous slide, sealing building wall attachments.
Yes.
Did I just commercialize it?
Yes. Yeah, that's part of the commercial design standards. It's here because it was a precision thing instead of a, a conspiracy thing. Okay. Next up, on the hit parade, we are anticipating taking these 54 changes to city council new work session on 6-6, correct, Governor?
Yes, 6-6 work session, correct.
All right. And assumingly, we would either have a public hearing on the 1st of June or shortly thereafter if they wanted us, because there was more work for us to do. We will continue with outreach. There are various real estate groups and things that operate here in Elamance County. We'll continue to work with them and find ways to make sure that we're addressing their concerns. And we'll continue to track provisions for the next time we get to see them. And I'll warn you, the next time, it's going to be, there's a pretty big, some more clarity coming about these district dimensional requirements. So all of those images in the districts, we're going to change those and bring them into some uniformity and make it a little bit easier to understand all of the dimensional requirements, setbacks, density for different kinds of uses. Frankly, also, I think it's time to change the cover. It's time to bring our, bring our document cover into conformance with the new color scheme for what we're in. Anyway, that's it, and I appreciate y'all's time.
Seriously, I think we'd love, agree, thank you. Yeah, this is a, this is a great work that you've done
and your presentation lasted exactly right.
Did you see the comment from Ethan Rainer out there, too? Excellent presentation, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, it's my pleasure. I will tell you that there are not a lot of places where it's all office to continue to work with staff and important bodies over time. And this has been a, just a fabulous opportunity for me and I've enjoyed every, every second of it. I just can't thank the city and you guys enough.
How long have you been, been around, eight years or something?
Well, since 2016.
Okay. Six years, all right, well.
Yeah.
That's all right.
I, and I'm the luckiest planner in the state, so I should appreciate it. Any other questions?
I heard Mr. Kirk say you want to make a motion. I'm ready.
I make a motion to recommend approval of the request to amend the City of Burlington Unified Development Ordinance with a proposed text amendment. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed text amendment with the comprehensive plan and that Section 4 Land Use Goal 1 recommendation 5 of the comprehensive plan calls for an update of the Unified Development Ordinance. Section 4 Land Use Goal 1 recommendation 5 of the comprehensive plan calls for ensuring sound land planning decisions that are consistent with the vision of the plan. This action is reasonable and in the public interest and that Section 4 Land Use Goal 2 recommendation 4 of the comprehensive plan addresses confusion, conflicts and obsolescence of the zoning code through new unified development ordinance. Section 4 Land Use Goal 2 recommendation 4 of the comprehensive plan and new UDO will be modern, graphically intensive and user-friendly from both the public practitioner and administrative perspective.
Second? I've got a second for the motion before we vote. Did you have anything you want to say?
I'll submit my comments to the panel's name.
Okay. Mr., I'll let you take a vote.
Turn the vote. Chair Parker?
Approved.
Vice Chair Black?
Going to the eliminated sign face residential man?
What's your vote?
No.
No.
Commissioner Kirk? Approved. Commissioner Kirk Patrick? Approved. Commissioner Ron?
Approved.[1764.95]